... For the pledge and flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, councilmen and citizens.
Um, here, Rob, before we go to approve the agenda, I was wanting to ask the council if we could add an item to the agenda regarding the Coliseum Dunk Club permit. It expired on December thirty first, twenty thirteen. Jared Hewitt came by the office today and said it's usually something that our past city clerk would automatically do at the end of the year, which it was missed, and I was wanting to put that on the agenda so we could approve that and keep our event up.
Under new business.
Under new business, we have approval?
Uh, do we need a motion or is consensus, right? Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, thank you.
Any opposition? I guess Terry did. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda from the last meeting.
Hello?
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Minutes to the previous meeting, then we've got a trip. Need to approve minutes for...
Thought we just did.
We will approve the minutes separately, and then I have a report on the treasures report.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now the tre- uh...
Treasures report?
Treasure report.
Well, on the treasures report, we have a total of two hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents in all funds. The Coleman Oil Bill is higher this month because of the fuel for the city fire truck was on the invoice in the amount of one hundred forty-five ninety-six. We paid the state insurance policy premium for the year in the amount of two thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. The car member services bill includes two hundred dollars for the continuing education training for Helen and Jason. And the region's blue shield payment is higher this month because they included two months of premiums for starting line health insurance coverage.
Any questions?
Uh, was there any time billed with Sharon? I know she helped John stop her, she just keep it a record.
Basically, she did not put in an invoice for her time, and it's been just pretty much brief phone calls.
I best suspected there was gonna be there, but I was surprised there wasn't.
No bail from Sharon.
Thank you.
I move we accept the treasures report and pay the bill, or did you have a question on the bill?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Treasures report, oh, you gave that. No?
Yeah. We're down to number eight.
Report, city council. Is there any thing for the...
Is this where she had to do the...
Yeah. The library, uh, the Prairie River has sent out, went to I-Crimp, who was their insurance carrier. I-Crimp sent out King Services to survey the library and see if there was any smoke damage in there. They did find soot, so they are going to be cleaning the library. I don't know exactly how they're gonna do it. Christie was, I don't know if it's like a bug bomb or something they put off in there. I don't know. But I haven't seen the report, I just know that they have been there. This is what they're gonna do when they get a report, I will bring it into no rate.
Was it a bug bomb, or was it fire?
It was soot from... But before, before the fire, we had a lot of problems when they did the wood stove. And it was smoky in there then, at least two times. So, um, I don't know if it was then, or if it was from the fire.
Is it soot or dust, or sand?
Christie said soot, but I went over and did, and I can't find anything, so I have to...
Soot would indicate a fire, must be...
Their deductible is five hundred dollars, they have already contacted Joy Nye's Insurance. So, hopefully the Prairie River won't be out of anything.
This is through the library.
It's through the library, yeah, and, yeah. It's through, 'cause that library's a branch of Prairie River Library District. Is that the only one I'm supposed to do?
Not this time. Save it till later.
No, I'm not gonna do the trees, but the bats in here anyway.
No, I guess not.
Anything of alarming zoning?
Nothing to report.
City clerk?
I wanted to update you that I notified our contact with the Lewis Clark Riders, Teresa, that the council had approved their use of our city park for their fundraiser on July twelfth. And she wanted me to report back, thank you very much to the council. And I also let her know the location of the Coliseum Park, and they could use the facilities there when they were in town. And she had told me they're going to have their own insurance in place for the event. Do you want me to obtain a copy of that, or is that...
Yeah.
I mean, I've heard.
I think, yeah, get a copy.
Question on that, there also be grannies will be open, so maybe let them know that they...
Yeah.
Go for restaurants?
On Saturday, yeah, till noon to four.
Town visit shopping.
I didn't, I wasn't looking for the shop, but what, what time does they think it was going to start and finish?
I think, basically, they're starting from Lewis in the morning, and they're going up the route, up to the top, around Winchester. Then they're coming down, so it's gonna be more in the afternoon that we'll start seeing.
But it sounded like several, they're, they'll only be twelve to fifteen people here at a time.
Yeah.
Are they trying to have it done by dark? That was my curiosity.
I would think so, I would, but, you know, I think, I can get a little more particulars for you.
Well, I was just, the only reason I ask that is because I'll make sure to have somebody extra at the store to clean the bathrooms.
Is that Shabang weekend, July twelfth?
No.
No, Shabang is June.
Yeah.
Come on. Okay, never mind.
And then I wanted to update you on the youth program that Smith Auto is arranging to do at the community center. And he did pick up copies of the waiver and release to get signed by the participants. And he was wanting to get an initial meeting in February, but had to go out of town. And I talked to him today, and he said that he will be doing that this Saturday. And basically, his plans are is to get youth together and his helper, and then just come here initially to kind of meet, talk with the kids, hand out the releases, explain them, so that he can get the signatures and send them home, get the parent's signatures, and then start up.
So it didn't happen on this twenty second?
So it did not happen. But it's looking to happen this Saturday here. And I just wanted to give you another update on the ten Streamlight brand helmet mounted flashlights that were approved at last meeting. I ordered those, but the outfit that Brian Gomar had got those quotes from, they were out of stock, so they went to the manufacturer. The manufacturer was actually back ordered, and so I talked to them at the end of last week, and they're anticipating those arriving sometime this week or early next week. And then I wanted you to be aware that we've been talking to a landlord on Coliseum Avenue, who's moving in a new double wide mobile home to replace the trailer that they took out after purchasing the property. And I, they informed me that they did not need a building permit because they were tribal members doing work on the reservation. But when I reported that to our building inspector, Jim Yeoman, he told me that he was not aware of any such rule or law exempting the tribal members and cities on the reservation. And so he said he felt we needed a building permit. So I reviewed our ordinances and could not find anything excluding tribal members from the required building permit. And so I talked to the property owner and let them know that I would either need some documentation of the law from the tribe excluding them, or they need to fill out the building permit, which I gave to them. And I just want to give you an update, I just received this today.
He does have a copy of that permit. A copy of the...
I gave him a copy of our building permit to fill out.
Did they get a building permit when they put the other double wide in?
No, because they told the city clerk that they were exempt, so they didn't.
They're not.
They're not.
They're not.
And I think that we also need to, if they do not acquire one, they need to stop work until they get a...
I did call in the end of last week and said that the city observed they were continuing the work on the double wide, and I did not have back the documentation or the building permit, and that they could not continue work until they did supplies with one or the other. And today, this is what I was supplied with, and they read this from the managing attorney at the Ness First Pride that they don't need a building permit. I read it, and it's, to me, it seems like they do need one.
I would cover our grannies, call in.
Yep.
They need a building permit. And if we were negligent and didn't have one on that first building, shame on us.
But now shame on us twice.
No, not twice.
Because he plans on putting a third in there.
That was my question, it's really close to the house, so that's what I'm thinking there.
The spacing in between them, we need to make sure it's correct as well.
It's over fifteen feet between the house and the...
And that's the requirement.
But what about, oh, there it is. It has to be fifteen feet between homes.
Fifteen feet between that little house and that trailer he just moved here?
And he's also planning on putting another...
He's planning on putting three there.
Which would be three, and we...
Three more?
That's gonna be...
Three total, now there was only little house, a single double, a single one, a single one, and little house. Now he has little house, but he's got double wide and a double wide, no more.
I'd like to report to the council that I also did talk to the landlord about his intention of bringing in another double wide, and maybe another one or another one. At that point, I told him that there were only on the property they owned, there was only four water connections, four sewer connections, and he could not hook him to those connections to supply to another home there. And our cost to put in a sewer line just from our sewer system to the property is two thousand five hundred for the sewer, two thousand five hundred for the water. I told him that, and he kinda, you know...
And that is to the meter, just the meter?
Just to the meter, and then when they...
I just want to be clear, it's to the proper length.
To the meter, then they are instructed to do the further. Also, in our ordinances, our, our operators are allowed to go in and, and inspect what they are doing with the sewer and the water line connections on their property.
Who does the final inspection from the meter, once they say they're ready to go, before they start burying lines? Who inspects that?
Nobody.
Nobody, so we're taking their word that they didn't tap in?
Being on their side is their problem, and they'll have to pay for it.
I'm just wondering, once they get it done and they start burying lines, who inspects?
If they have to leave, they have to dig it up and fix it.
Because it'll show on the meter.
Soon as they have one.
No, I would, I would call in and run it through.
Both, on both high ones.
There's fifteen feet, maybe, from that big house to the first trailer they put in. There's no way there's fifteen feet from that little house to the new trailer. I don't think you could even walk through there.
No.
Have you looked?
I would say it's about eight feet. My guess is about eight feet, from the one trailer to the new one they put in there.
I'm not very good with me.
I would say it's about eight to ten feet.
Unless he's planning to look over a little bit more.
When he's had to put them together yet, they're still about...
They're together, as of today, they're together.
Oh, as of today?
They are together.
Well, I had a water leak today, so I didn't see much.
Yeah, they are together as of today.
So he's still working on it?
Absolutely, he is, absolutely.
And you've asked him to stop?
To stop, I have asked him to stop.
And he hasn't stopped.
Correct.
So when you get all that again, how fast can we...
Yeah, you need to, can you call in the morning?
Cease and desist.
Yeah. I can't believe we didn't get a building permit on the first one.
How about all that redo on that old yellow house?
They, they were aware of the conditions prior to putting them in. And because she explained it to them, and they were so sure they knew what they was talking about. Or they thought they could bluff us, I guess.
Especially if they were to do the last one without one.
Uh, we could have the sheriff post a notice, cease and desist.
Let her talk, let her talk again in the morning.
Legit, if it is, I suggest we have it put up.
Absolutely.
If you call in first thing and...
I know. And, um, let me go on, I received a quote for the dust abatement from Roadrise Inc., and I included your, a copy in your council packet. The quote for this year is five thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, which is a three hundred ninety-five dollar increase from what was paid last year. And the price last year was increased around two hundred fifty dollars from the prior year, so it continues to increase. Sharon Odeley told me that you would need to approve and accept this quote before I confirm the word with Roadrise.
Nobody else does, does, does anybody else do this, this magnesium?
That was my question too, and I also had another question about, it, it's only for the gravel roads and the dirt roads. Well, if we, if we haven't maintained all of the gravel roads and dirt roads, it doesn't remove every citizen in Coliseum to pay for something that not everybody gets the benefit for. So if we don't, if we haven't maintained all of our gravel roads, and we haven't maintained...
Well, then you say other things that don't fit either.
I'm just, it's just, come on, I think, if we haven't maintained them, then it doesn't help everybody if we don't maintain the roads.
Well, the other end, it keeps the dust down, whether you've got a paved road in front of you, and you're over on the other side, and the dust rolls down the street, you're gonna have dust all over everything.
If it's on dirt, it goes away a lot faster than it is if it's gravel and it's up into the ground.
Um, it's my understanding, I, I am new to this position, this, my understanding on the gravel roads, that it's a two-step process, that lawyer brings in gravel in the spring and puts it down, and then the dust abatement goes on top? Is that correct from your...
Yeah, we, we fix the potholes and stuff in the spring, and then as soon as we got the road ready, then they come in.
Lawyer brings in gravel?
Well, yeah.
And then we try to get the dust abatement on, the timing of it is before Shabang days for the town.
Does it make that much of a difference?
It definitely quite a difference for dust.
Six thousand dollars worth for everybody though? That's just my personal opinion.
Well, that is a wee bit of money.
And really, how long does it really last? I mean, once you put that, once you apply it...
Every current range, you can see it come up and then...
He puts another, uh, does he do it two or three times?
Uh, if, if, like, uh, there was a couple of years there where it rained right after they put it down, and they come back and put an additional one down at no cost, I believe.
It rains right after.
I personally don't like it, it tracks in everywhere.
I don't like it, I don't like it.
Yeah, it tracks into the market, yeah.
Might be, try not doing it. Six thousand dollars we could spend on road things that differ many.
Would you like me to try to do some research this month before the next meeting? Because we have time before they're scheduled to do it, if we confirm it. And see if there's anyone else there, out there that does this, I have no idea. And if we could get a lower bid.
Well, the question was brought up, do we want to bang the idea of this, whether or not? I, I'm mixed on it, I think it makes it more pleasant.
Should we put that on the next gym and say, "Dear name," or...
We still could get it done by Shabang days, if we wait till the next meeting in April, March, right, or April.
It's April meeting, and so it's still processed two months before June. And I do know that, that, that some people that live on roads with the gravel, they really appreciate the dust abatement. I have calls that I've taken in City Hall where it rained right afterwards, and they say, "Are they gonna, you know, come back?" It didn't really take it, and it really helps on holding down the dust before they move it. So, we might have just...
Lot of roads, lot of combs.
Yes, so a lot of people should...
I have a lot of people, like Kathy said, a lot of people would say, right, when eventually they do that, even for the next two, two weeks, you step on that, you got nice carpet, you track it in your house, and you cannot get the stuff out of your carpet.
Well, I'm just curious, since we got this as large as audience, just what is the general feeling with the people here on the dust control? Do you like it or not? Who likes it? One, who doesn't like it? One, two, three.
Well, you guys live on paved roads.
I'm on the nate, I live on gravel, I'm on the nate.
I live on gravel, and I don't like it, it gets all over my car, even on the outside. It, it can eat up that paint.
And if you're gonna do it before Shabang days, do it at least a week before, not a couple of days before, because it's terrible.
Yeah, because it's...
We have that one problem, we make sure that...
And it kind of traps on the asphalt streets.
And all these people that have decent cars that come out here, that have fun, you get in your car with that stuff on you, and hey, it's just nasty.
And I think you're wasting your money putting it down on the side of the street, down on the paved roads. You're just wasting your money.
Well, the only place we do that is on Main Street, because they have a, because that's where the dust is at.
Yeah, but nobody drives that. It's just the park.
Can you check and see if anybody does, else does it?
That sounds like general consensus, that nobody really likes it.
You know, for six thousand dollars.
I can see on gravel roads, if you've got a regularly traveled one, you know, the main are clearly one, but just on a backstreet.
All right, all right. I'll think about it. We'll make a decision next...
You'll think about what?
About... Well, I'll ask more questions.
What are you thinking about?
It's like, aren't too many people like it?
Yeah, it would be good to ask.
I don't try without it once.
Good idea, Bill, thank you.
Huh?
It was a good idea to ask, thank you.
Yeah, it's nice to get some input from people, so we have people to ask.
So, when we're finished with the dust abatement, I will, for this meeting, I'll go on and let you know that, I think you saw on your council packet that we received an email about the Arbeiday grant announcement. The deadline's March twenty-first, so if the council is interested in applying for the grant, we need to do something at this meeting.
We have done this in the past, we have done this off and on for the last, I don't know, four or five years. We purchased trees by the park, we purchased roadies. You purchased roadies last year at Home Depot, is that where you got them? I don't see that we have any trees, other than that little one that they broke off. Is it coming back up?
There is, it was a new sprout.
Yeah, I don't, I was just gonna let it slide this year. I don't see anything that, that we could buy and plant anywhere. So, at this point, yeah.
And then, um, I was notified by email also that there's a Northern Iowa adjudication workshop in Post Files on April fourth. I included information in your council packet and received in the mail some additional information, if you'd like to take one and pass it on. I'm not sure if anyone would be interested in going to this, the cost is only twenty-five dollars with lunch included. And the workshop is closer than Boise, but it's still up in, um, Post Files, two and a half hour drive away. But that kind of sets out the weekend a lot, if anyone was interested, I could register you.
All about water.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really whipping.
Yeah, we got a lot.
Is it higher or low? Well, it's medium right now, we just learned everything we needed to know.
I want Herman to go put little gate tape or paint, the water levels, heights on there, so you just look and know.
Find a, find a good spot to do that, that'd be, right on the both bridges.
Well, the Third Street Bridge is best, if it gets on the backside of the actual, see man?
So probably not.
Probably not.
Yeah.
And that's all for my report.
Any more discussion? Or question? Yes?
I was just gonna say on that, the dust abatement, I think it might be overdone, but that one going up that new bridge and going around there and going up, uh, St. Rose Street, I think the area is great, because otherwise we could sell the dust in some of them places right there that...
You mean the Watson Bridge? The new bridge?
Yeah, yeah.
Coliseum out, because I can save...
On St. Rose Street, I think that's great to have that dust abatement right there, because if that, one, that mobile on the corner really catches that dust, that in other places right along there, they, they seem to like it too. But it could be...
Yeah, maybe we should do a smaller version and just hit the, well, the problem is, we're just hitting dust, dust roads anyway, ninety-nine percent of it. Hit the front road, because we thought that was better than the, that's the only thing they added, you got the back roads and all the gravel ones. But, uh, we'll see what we come up with, I guess.
That'll be on our next, next words, decision making.
Yeah, that'll...
I'll put it on the agenda.
Any comments or questions? Yes?
Um, I'm thinking about maybe putting another trailer in down at my place, I already heard here that it's gonna be five thousand for water and sewer. Why don't I would pull a no when riding the side mine and put it on the one where I'll put mine? Kind of make mine like a double one.
Oh, if it's gonna be a single residence?
Yeah.
That makes a lot of difference.
It's not gonna be rental, nobody else be living there, just you?
No, just me, just me and my wife, kids, maybe my mother-in-law, calling, I might do that.
And you still need a building permit, and to make sure you do the right electrical, I mean, sewer connections of a single residence is one resident, one sewer is fine.
Okay, now it's all...
Wait, no, we have, we have to check that out.
Oh, okay.
It's approximately.
I meant, yeah.
Yeah, but if it's under one roof, it'd be like double one. There wouldn't be two trailers, there'd only be one. So there wouldn't be no difference between the four and the double one.
Would they be opened up, accessible to each other? Are they, both trailers accessible?
Like I said, are we gonna remodel the trailers?
Yeah, we'll remodel the inside of them to make it just like a double one, instead of two trailers sitting there under one roof.
And that's down at your place?
That's my place on that.
Well, we'll have to go through the building permit, make sure it's done right. And get, draw up a plan and submit it to, you can probably talk to him, ask him what you need, and, and when he's in town, he can at least tell you. If they decide to get a permit, that's usually the way it works, isn't it?
But Billy and Inspector are in town tomorrow.
Have them come over and ask you a question, and you have them call him, and have them come over to City Hall and talk to them. Because these codes have to be followed, or they just get carried away with, you know?
There's, we heard that there, because we have three lots, but we heard that we only have one water.
Frowling, yeah, sounds right.
Okay, because we heard that there were other trailers there, but we didn't know if there was any more sewer, water, and sewer trouble.
I agree.
We heard there was two trailers on that three lots at one time.
There was, but when Mike Brode bottomed, he broke them all up, he sold them, all been sold at one time to individuals, and then Mike Brode take them back, and when he did that, he put separate water and sewer to each trailer that was there. And your lot has three lots, just like mine does.
But only one water and sewer?
And only one water and sewer, yes.
Very good pay, they like, there was, what was, twelve sewer hooked up there, now we have six of them running. Now we have six of them running. You know, and that's why you got rid of them. So, once they're gone, they're gone. You start over.
I think we're still continuing on reports.
Any other questions? We'll move on then.
All right.
We're under maintenance.
I got a clean water sample for February. Uh, we've been trying to keep up with potholes in the soft spots of the road. We've been putting gravel down with our little easy load. Uh, we had to keep an eye on the Saddle Club for a week. Uh, we had a problem with someone moving our fire line and cones off the road and letting people run over our fire hoses. Uh, so I was talking to Catherine and Bill about that, about getting some more taller cones, probably a dozen of them.
A dozen cones, and do we have any detour signs?
That was, that was the reason my hand is to ask the same thing.
Yeah, so next time, I mean, I, like I told you, I have no problem running down with that four-wheeler and throwing cones in. If, if I know where the cones are and the tape, you guys are busy. We're not always gonna have a fire in town, but it could be a residence next time where we need to block it off so stupid people don't run over hoses.
Right.
And then we need to know, we need to put out detour signs so that.
So they know exactly where they're going.
Yeah, we should have the detour signs up after the first time.
I will, I, I, I'll vouch for the, we really do need some detour signs. Only, only because you get somebody coming out of town, didn't know where they're going. They drive right by, unfortunately, my store.
Yeah.
They bite past.
So, I, I, did you price how much those tall ones would be?
No, I have not.
Okay.
We do need them more cones anyway for Chabangs and everything else, a whole cluster.
Ask something. Where are the ones coming from Chabang days?
The, the barricade sign?
Yeah.
They're, they're.
They're there. That's not something I can move by myself.
Okay.
Those signs are really broken.
Those big barricades, they're there, but I was thinking, I was thinking maybe just a little detour sign that, you know, Bev and I were sitting out there at the fire and we had, we could go get the cones and do the cones, and we could get the little detour signs and put them up. That big thing, I'm sorry, come on, I'm seventy, almost seventy years old.
Where are you guys doing it, not the city management?
Because they were fighting fires, and they fought fires twenty-four hours a day. And there's not enough guys on the crew to relieve them.
Except that night.
That night. They had the two nights, Sunday night and Tuesday night.
It was almost like forty-eight to seventy-two hours. The fire was observed by our small volunteer.
And then our volunteer guys, half of them work, so they couldn't come in during the day. And, you know, that's something Bev and I can do, or, you know, if it's nighttime, I can call my daughter-in-law and say, "Come help."
If you need help with those barricades, I will. I've got them pretty good out there, which is a very nice thing.
Do any, any companies like Herco or any of the other ones like have excess or older ones that we could purchase cheaper? Maybe, you never know.
I know, I know back in Ohio, all the villages back there use, like, the red signs or the D quarter signs help with paint. Then sometimes paint would just fade.
Well, we got the detour signs.
I mean, they need.
No, I'm talking about the cones.
We need the cones. They have extra cones or whatever. I think we've had, we're pretty short of cones actually. We're gonna do some.
We're planning to donate some to the city.
Who will?
What?
State, county?
Check.
Who knows? We can make some for you.
Thank you. Good idea.
All right, and we've been working with a sensor leak link, putting in fiber optic cable. Uh, they were doing a good job up till today. Uh, they pushed a compression coupler off of a six-inch line that had been broken before. Uh, we, they dug it up. We cut out the broken part and put in new couplers and a new piece of pipe and got the water back on today. And the grid's been up, running good. We've been watching it. I've walked the levee a couple of times and it's all doing real good. Uh, I contacted a company about the LED streetlights. Uh, we're waiting on a quote from them. And I called a Vista and asked them about changing the heads out and if they'd do it. And I'm waiting on a call back from them.
Uh, did you ask Vista if they could maybe add that type of light? And then we could do it cheap or something?
Uh, no, I did not. Uh, I just asked them about if we bought the heads, uh, heads, if they'd replace them.
But you're waiting on a call back?
Yeah.
Now, they give a rebate. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to step on you.
You do.
Finish, finish here, please. I'm sorry.
So, when you ask them that, you can ask Mayor Boss question at the same time?
Right.
And maybe Bill's.
Well, I know, I don't, I know, I just wonder if Vista gives everybody a rebate.
If there's any rebates or tax credits for going to the.
But they might have the similar head, and we might be able to get a better deal because they probably buy larger quantities. It's worth looking into.
Well, I've got. And that's all I got for now. We had that leak today, so it is prepared real good.
Is there anything from the fire department?
We had a fire.
It wasn't clean, wait.
It wasn't a good one. Gary wanted handheld, the batteries for the handheld ordered, and I don't know how many handheld.
Oh, one type indeed. I was gonna talk to him tonight. Brian thought he was going to be at the meeting, so I know something must have come up to keep Gary away from our meeting. And I'll be in contact with.
You mean the flashlights?
No.
No, no, the flash, the radios.
Two ways.
The two-way radios.
With radios?
No, radios, so I don't mean.
And I don't know how many. It's just on my stuff.
Uh, yeah.
I'll hold up with Gary.
Yeah, I'll hold up with Gary and see.
And the, the volunteers, we have one person volun, that wants to volunteer at the fire department, but they went to the meeting and there was no way there.
Meeting was Tuesday night at seven o'clock, and they were here. They were here.
We had all kinds of people here.
Yeah.
I, I was a volunteer, and I was told, you told me to come on Monday, and I was here Monday.
Oh, no, Monday, second Monday is the council meeting, first Tuesday.
First Tuesday is the fire meeting. So.
I will have. That's okay. I'll, I'll make sure.
If we have, and get it, get it.
Some paperwork from.
I was just gonna say, get, get them.
Turned in his paperwork.
Volunteer paperwork and everything they need to do. And do we need to have more than one or two before we give the person the training or?
We have to have up to ten, at least ten people.
Yeah, so we, so we couldn't have any more volunteers unless we have ten of them to volunteer?
No.
We can't give the training.
Training.
I guess it takes a special certified instructor. It's well over a thousand bucks. So, you don't wanna get all the.
So, what would, under ten people, what would volunteer be doing?
There, there's three, four, five, I think, I, I count.
Six, seven now that need.
Right, that need the training.
So, we need a few more right there.
And Justin, my name is Kathy Bomar, and I'm the nasty old lady that'll call you the glowy night.
That's okay. I'm not the two o'clock in the morning.
Well, I was two thirty that.
I don't know about nasty, just call it old.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So, but I, I took your name and your number, and I'll put your name down on my list. But I will wait to hear from Gary, you know, because that's who my boss is. Yeah, you can call them or no, you can't call them. Yeah.
So, what can the volunteers do that, the new guys do?
Pull lines.
Pull lines.
Help with everything. I mean, help with barriers, putting up blockades. There's all those.
If you haven't had the training, you're not allowed to go inside of nothing. You're not allowed to do anything, not allowed to put a suit on.
No, but you can pull lines.
I'm, I'm just asking. You're not allowed to put suits on.
And the only reason I was there is because when I looked out, they said it was, the fire call came through that it was City Hall that was on fire. And I thought, holy, whoo-hoo. And I looked out and the whole front yard, and between my place and your place was just gray, dark, black smoke. And I grabbed, got dressed, grabbed my keys because I have a key to the library. And I didn't know that you guys had keys to the library. You had keys to every building in town.
Yeah.
So.
Well, all the buildings that we operate.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we didn't have a key to the Saddle Club. We got to chop the door.
And we broke the.
Somebody had a key, but. So, anybody, I'm speaking, we got a lot of people here. If you know some younger people that really would get help out on the fire department, and they could volunteer so we can get this training going, spread the word, please.
When is the training or what?
They don't have training scheduled yet.
But what, what, is it during the day, night?
It's a time, it was what, three nights a week?
Oh, no, one, one, one night a week for what, seven weeks, seven weeks, eight weeks?
There was a couple nights.
Or there was a couple there.
It takes a couple of months.
It's a couple of months long, yes.
Depends on how you wanna do it if you don't have two times a week, because we were, you do it once a week. And, but it was, and then we had a couple barn practice burns once we get going. It's really a lot of work and, and we appreciate it. We got some new people.
Yeah, we'd be great.
Any more discussion?
Well, we're gonna get water and put water on the fire trucks because there was no water the guys have. So, we need, we're gonna put water on the fire trucks.
There is a case.
I seen the case sitting behind the driver's seat.
I put that there one day.
That's just the beginning. We'll get some more, so it's all stocked up to help the firefighters.
Because they're not gonna be in town. You guys were out last year, way out.
Oh, yeah, there was a couple times.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's, there's people that bring water and they'll let you in town.
You can ask them your own, just so you know about it.
I freeze it. I got a gallon here froze. In the summer, I grab it and take it, and then I just pour the little ones in it. I got ice cold water that way.
Yeah, anybody doesn't know, we also have a county truck, and we can go five miles roughly around the area. We leave the city truck in town. And if we get a call, then we can go out and get the outside area like they did over.
And there's also personnel from the fire department that stays behind in case there is another fire.
And the nice thing with that is that when we had this fire, because we are a subsidiary helping the Nespers County out, is their crew also showed up on this fire in town. The chief of the Nespers Fire was there, and he is a great, great help. He's always.
Was he there both nights?
Uh, I think the Tuesday night.
He was there Sunday night.
He was there Sunday night.
Is there anything from the sheriff's office to report? Well, let's move on and then update and an additional discussion of Poxley, Oakmere Trailer Court. Did I pronounce it right that time?
See, I, I have a double wide, a ten-to-three situation down here where I was gonna put this double wide up there with the two RV spaces there.
And I gave them copies of the map in my packets if you wanna point out on the map to them that they have in the packets of the, um, court.
These are what?
It's, it's a seventy-nine.
Oh, these are ones you're looking at? You think I'm moving here?
No, it's the same one. It's the same one, but it's just, but different cards on, on, on one side and the back.
And that's a twenty-eight wide or twenty-four wide?
Twenty-four, like, you know, fit right in that space up there.
And which space is it going in?
That's where the two RV spaces were there. That's where it would go.
Where it says RV six.
And, um.
We got the rest of them already cleaned up to put peoples in there. Add them all together, clean it up.
We'll have to get them stamped as our, that, we got the.
What's SS storage? Shetland? SS storage shed? Let's see, that's twenty-eight wide. Those other ones.
So, where is it coming?
Write in number.
This is where it is.
Or six and seven?
Yeah.
You have to have fifteen feet between these buildings.
Yeah, we're adding more before we clean the rest.
Well, he wants, he's got a grand plan here, what he does when he gets rid of them, so.
Okay, we, we need to make that, there's a place where you bumped into somebody.
At the end of Pond Road Loop.
Uh-huh.
That's, that's on the other side.
That's on the other side?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, we need to get a no parking sign there.
I have it on, um, your business.
Do you? Okay. Where are you moving these from?
Well, it's.
Why would we get more in there where we haven't finished?
Well.
Previous business.
He can't.
Okay, okay, I'm just asking. Oh, I want to be on the same page as, okay. Okay.
Yeah, he gets booing me.
Okay.
But he's.
What they talked about. Okay, RR. It's RR. Even made it.
I mean, I haven't made this deal yet.
I don't.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't.
And you have enough room in there for that?
Yeah, yeah. And that RV space for these two RV spaces.
I understand.
The prior business.
There'll be fifteen feet here and fifteen feet here.
Last meeting, I remember somebody saying something about the dates.
And the little butt up against.
Yeah. Yeah, he was supposed to have this done last.
And they don't have enough room to park down here, too.
My guy never.
Yeah, I'm gonna go through there the other day, Rick. How, how you doing it?
It's three months.
Well, it looks quite tight, but.
Yeah, it looks a little tight.
There's enough room there and.
Where's the parking for number six? On the left?
It's right here. That's, this is.
They're gonna park across the driveway and walk over to their house?
Well, no, this, this is right here. This is, this is a parking lot right here. So, if this is up here, you got this parking down here.
So, what is this right here? Then if this is the parking lot, what is it?
Isn't this the road that comes through here?
No, no, this is the road.
Oh, this is, oh, I'm in the wrong spot. Okay, that's the road.
And this would be where they park their vehicles and then.
So, these are vehicles? These two things are.
Four, and you see four.
Uh, didn't think you had that much training.
It sure looks like.
Yeah, I just drove to throw it out.
Yeah, you already have one up here, too, right?
Yeah, this is one.
Right.
See, it, it'd be, they come over here far though, you know.
So, before you wanted to move in the other one, you'll get the rest of the stuff done before you decide to move in another trip.
Yeah, but he needs to decide. His plan worked out, so he can start buying what he needs. You gotta work all this out with the inspector, too, right?
It'll go off at space six here.
Yeah.
And that's what that building inspector said I should do with it.
Yeah, so he thought that was a pretty good idea, that fail? If it went on the mic?
Well, which building inspector was it?
Yeoman?
The Yeoman?
Jim Yeoman is who you've been talking to. Did he see these pictures and this dimension?
I should do it that way. I showed him, I showed him the, the measure of everything, and he looked at it and he said, "You should put building."
I was trying to figure that out, too, because you have to do this and this.
This doesn't make sense. It was these over here, which.
That makes sense.
I had mine upside down.
I started upside down. That's why I went like this about three minutes ago.
It's twenty-four by forty. The time period is.
I don't, I don't. This one, though, I get this is pretty good, but I can't put this in this.
Right.
But this one, this, this doesn't look like this.
This is Sam's.
And that's what.
Sorry, instead of these two here.
Oh, Rick, I think we got.
He's putting in a double wide.
Building inspector look at a.
Oh, okay.
Before we make a final on it.
Yeah, it's all, it's all HUD certified, Ron, and he said that that would be what I should put in there. So, I talked to him first.
You talked to the new one?
I don't know.
Jim Yeoman's.
I think that's who's up there.
He's been here a year or so.
Situation, and that's what he said I should do with it.
If he likes it, I can.
And where's the.
And every, and every single one of these has their own water and sewer. Yeah.
Or some garbage.
And, wow.
Maybe you can do a dumpsters.
And the reason for that is because if you try to put a single wide, it goes down to foreign parking spaces, you know? And it's just, that's what fits in there.
Well, not wrong putting in double, you get a little more ratchet, nicer looking place. And more comfortable, the more you're gonna.
It's just one, a couple years over being HUD certified, you know? What I could afford to put in there.
Well, the interface, I don't, that isn't.
All right, the only, only thing I have is make sure everything else is.
Yeah.
Tight, all the, all the other loose ends that's supposed to have been done before, before something else goes in.
And like he said, he wants to buy it and he wants to make sure it's okay. I don't see any objection if.
But everything else has to be out.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I know what you're getting at.
Finish the trailers out, get them hooked up.
I wouldn't make a decision on anything until everything else was out.
They just need to go bye-bye.
Yeah, really.
When the other stuff was out, then I would make a decision. I won't make a decision until the other stuff's done.
Do you?
Me personally.
It's not our call as long as it needs to go. Now, between this six and fifteen, you got well over fifteen feet there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and that too, and then this is up here, there'd be about eighteen feet there and this would be about sixteen, seventeen feet there, I think. It's kind of a tight fit, but that's the only thing, the dimension that works in there good and gives you enough parking, otherwise you're trying to put a single wide in there and you get down to the parking spot down here, you know?
Oh, you mean running this way?
Yeah, and that's the only way to put a single wide in is like that.
Why, why, single wide's the same, oh, it is, it's not thirty-two, oh, I see, it's thirty-two long. Okay, I like that.
Actually, it's forty, but that was another drawing I had, I just wrote it out.
Beat sixty, yeah, that works.
So it won't come out like we talked about being way up, which is gonna be this way down.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be twenty-four of these same facing this like this.
Where those pictures go, that's a forty, that's fine, I don't, I'd look that, it's a forty instead of a sixty, that is, that's a square.
Twenty-four by forty.
Alongside, go, along with the, with the road here, it'd be twenty-four like, or, yeah, uh, yeah, twenty-four that way and then forty this way.
So R and R's gonna, that's the guy over in Juliette, he's gonna break this down and he's gonna move it in there.
I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the listen. I think you'll have a good place to rent.
Well, that's why I say on weather committee, if April might rain so bad, you couldn't, when, when it would do it.
It'll be interesting. He needs to watch in the fire.
It's a perfect size.
Any problems with the existing sewer lines and under that or anything? Are they all out or?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so we say all right, as long as you get the other stuff out.
Get the other stuff, get the other stuff out.
Looks like you're great home.
And the building inspector to sign on line, correct? The building inspector and I can go over that with her.
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce. Rick, I'm thinking of the movie star. Get him mixed up all the time. Bruce Pockslake.
Who in the hell is Bruce Pockslake?
I box like him.
You know, even an actor, who in the hell is that? Bruce Willis, maybe?
No, no, no.
I know you got Alzheimer's and all, but.
Well, I just gotta insult him.
I'm not the one that asked him at first.
Well, I just called him a movie star, like he looks like him. He was in one of those Indiana Jones movies.
Okay.
Or something like that.
All right.
Oh, it's fun getting old, but.
Do we need to table this or what are we doing?
Uh, we're keeping this on the agenda until it's completed, yes, this project's completed. And, um, I will be talking to the building inspector, um, and reporting back at the next meeting.
Okay.
And also to, to Rick.
Okay.
Under unfinished business, Amir Bob, are we ready to go on B?
Exterior junk at two oh three Fourth Street.
After the last council meeting, I've been asked to, um, ask several questions to our city attorney. Um, and he responded by the, um, cover letter and the two orders that I included in your packet and, and I hope you had a chance to review those. He basically in the letter sets out an explanation about the orders and then he recommends that, um, the council approve the orders and sign them. And that can continue, um, getting that project cleaned up.
So, part of the stuff that's on, you've decided is on us.
Right.
It's on city property.
You knew that.
Yes.
And the city attorney, um, checked the records and he confirmed that it was, so that's why we have the two orders. One relates to the city property and the other replace, relates the owner's property.
Right, and the owner's property, how are we gonna make sure we, the, the easement portion of it is what I, how I read it? How far in are we going to?
Put all that on that side of the road, just city property set for that.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, his per, that's why we have two orders.
Oh, they're two orders on him, yeah.
The second.
We're gonna clean everything up?
Right, how far, up, up to his porch or?
Everything.
Anything dangerous in the public?
Hey, no, I'm just asking, I'm all, I'm all for it, I'm just asking.
One of those?
It's, well, there's actually something.
You wanna do it before the, before the bees get going too?
Oh, yeah.
I would say it grows change to ninety-eight now.
Around there.
Okay.
Slowly, but it's small improvements.
And the, and the plan was, as I read it, we are going to either apply a lien or charge him one way or the other for the removal of all that. And that is already in place?
Right, there's three vehicles, a camper.
Not in place, that is, and it's a procedure that is done.
Okay.
This is like the, the next step in the continuation of this.
But the plan for the procedure is there? To get her, give her members some way somehow.
Either salvage it. Or dispose.
So he's got to tell, uh, April to get that done, so that gives him his ninety days to.
What, what we have on the first order on city property is that, um, he's notified that he needs to have, um, his stuff removed by April fifteenth. And if not, then the city will commence to remove it. And then the one on his property has a little bit longer time, um, he's to commence the cleanup on April twentieth. And if he's not finished by May fifteenth, twenty-fourteenth, then the city will remove the rest of the accumulated trash on or before June fifteenth. And seek to collect the cost of the removal and salvage of saved materials.
So. Maintenance, maintenance is the guy that's actually just gonna go there and take it out or we're hiring, who we're hiring to?
Probably a bulldozer, I would guess.
A bulldozer would be good, but I was wondering who, who we were hiring.
I don't know.
Don't know yet.
I'll take bids.
And then, you know, hopefully there's some salvage money comes in to help pay for it.
So you need a motion on this?
Do we want our mayor here?
Yeah, we'll wait for him to come back.
Yeah, any other questions or?
Does the audience have any questions?
Well, I, I do.
Yeah, Chuck.
What Chuck? He's in jail, he can't everybody get that cleaned up.
How long is he in jail or?
Oh, I think quite a while.
Oh, quite a while.
They're trying to clean it up.
They're gonna send him to somewheres to get his head examined.
Is there anyone living on the property? Is there anyone living on the property?
No, one is in the hospital right now. The house is just as bad on the inside as what it is on the outside.
Ah.
Actually, I think outside might be a little bit worse than what inside is.
Right, well, that's gonna be an interest, well, we gotta do what we've been pushing for six months.
It is what it is, you can't stop now.
You know, and everybody that lives over there is, you know, you got, where you couldn't get around that corner and there's so much junk in the road. And we had to do something, so spread the word, anybody else wants to do that, it's gonna cost them.
Well, then I move that we proceed with, uh, the cleanup of the property that is at, what's the address on this? Narine you can clean?
Two oh three Fourth Street.
Two oh three Fourth Street.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will, um, check with our city attorney, letting him know that the motion was passed to sign the orders and get the particulars on how it's served to them when they're not there.
Yeah.
How do we do that? One is in the nursing room and he's in jail, in Kuzki County.
Well, he's been notified in the past, it'd be no different than my rental. Close to note on the door.
He's still in jail.
On the property, yeah.
In county?
He's in Kuzki, Kuzki County.
Oh, Kuzki. Or, Orfino?
Maybe I don't.
Where they got these?
The natural.
Is Wanda gonna come home?
Cami in Kuzki.
Is Wanda gonna come back?
Uh, maybe three months. She has to stay in the nursing home about three months.
Okay.
Well, talk about.
Karen talks to her two, three times a day.
I see a hand in the air.
Um, I know, um, from standpoint of, um, police officers, as long as they get their order from somebody, that they can notify whoever to clean it up. And as long as they're notified, if they don't have anything done with it, even if they're not there, you guys can actually still move on with it.
Say, so what's that last line I read in here?
You guys can still move on with it, as long as they're notified sometime before their date, then you guys are actually.
Well, we need to, there's time dopes on those notification dates and, so we'll, uh.
You have a long list for it.
Anyway, we like to see him work it out, or just have his friends or something, so.
Gotta earn his money, gotta, gotta give him a big list tomorrow.
He has a list, he has a list tomorrow.
We'll proceed with the paperwork anyway, so, uh, we'll figure out that maybe we can find somebody to work through and work with Narine on that. If anybody knows how to give him his paperwork. That sound reasonable?
Any more questions?
I'll pause it.
Anyone need a break? Okay, we'll continue, move on to new business.
I'm gonna take that break.
Citizens comments.
Uh-oh.
Or questions. Welcome citizens.
Welcome.
This looks good, I like to see this one more often.
We made it.
Yes.
Can we do something about the strange street? Uh, it's very bad.
For what?
What? Main street.
How it's cracked and bumpy and.
Hot hole.
Yeah, I think it needs to be updated.
It would be nice if we could come and work up with some money to get it done.
Do you have any suggestions where to get the money?
I know ITV, I know they know grants and everything, where yes, we can get the money to do it. Um, I've actually spoken with them before when I work at, I don't just agree with them, but, um.
So you're suggesting like a grant to repay?
Yes. It's actually how they get all the main roadways, the highways and everything done, they will apply for grants.
I don't know. I've never, I don't know.
Um, just try and figure out how much we got in our road budget.
Not enough for what it's gonna cost.
No, not much, twelve thousand dollars for, uh, what, twenty feet of pavement on a bridge.
Does she like these cameras?
I'm cute.
I think they're not too sweet.
Well, you know, the, uh, road, once you hit the city limits, it becomes, the way I understand this, we'll, excuse, we don't have insurance legal here, maybe Narine knows. Once you hit the city limits, we're responsible, the minute you leave, it's county, so they don't do diddly for us.
No.
And the total in the street fund, um, as of, um, across first is eighty-one thousand three hundred.
That'd get about sixty feet then.
Well, that's what, that has, we, we just come out of that, I mean, we don't have eighty-one thousand.
Well, it's budgeted for other maintenance of the streets.
Well, that's what the gravel.
The dust that they build, the gravel, the taking care of hot holes in the city. It is budgeted for quite a bit of other things, it's not like we could just turn around and.
It's not gonna happen this year, probably next year.
It's something, it's something that has to go into the budget.
If we could budget it in.
It's understandable, but I was.
If we get a load of hot pads in and do something, that's a little more durable on a potlatch or a pot hole.
I know it's been like that for years.
Well, when they were working on Watson Street Bridge, there was some extra blacktop and they went and put it in at the railroad tracks, right? I mean, remember, was it Watson or?
Spell up the road.
No, it was a spell, we went out and fixed it.
Yeah, and that really helped down the railroad tracks for a long time.
Lasted longer. We gotta figure out, plan to, to get a truck a hot patch and to try to pitch the worst.
Put down right away.
Right, and that means you gotta prep them and dig them out and, and then.
Have to work, uh, get it ready.
Can't get that many. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you there.
Oh, that's why I mentioned maybe talking to ITV and seeing that they know any grants you guys could be applying for, that be able to get the money to fix the streets.
Sure. Want to have a try? What do you think?
I think it.
Worth checking?
Yeah.
I was checking.
Would Jack can do it?
Would that show?
But I don't see any way that it'll happen this year at all. We'll have to work towards it and plan for it.
Yeah. And then our maintenance department does try when the weather lets up for themselves to get gravel into the puddles. But then it has to be a certain temperature to be able to.
Oh, yeah, I, I, the planners got that, that's actually why the project I heard the break took so long. We actually had temperatures too low, they actually can't do a lot out here. And so a lot of it was just us having to just play because it was just too dangerous trying to clean up everywhere.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
Yeah, I got something. I've got a lot of concerned citizens been complaining about our maintenance people. Seeing, uh, kids riding around on the four wheeler when they plow in snow and having a snow truck and a plow. And maintenance people taking their kids to school, paying for their own, or gravel in their own driveways, plowing the snow out of their own driveways. And they're, oh, quitting, taking their lunch hour, taking a whole hour or more, and their fifteen minute breaks is at least a half hour. Citizens are noticing that stuff. They didn't wanna come forward, but they left it me to do.
Well, a lot of.
County people know about it.
A lot of times, maintenance people on taking breaks, they take them when they can get them.
But how long are they supposed to take?
I don't know what, what the break.
It's fifty, two fifteen minute breaks a day.
How many?
Two.
And they quit early.
Well, they work late too, otherwise.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what about the banks, they were fires and didn't leave, we're, we're just going negative though, we're not going positive.
And, um.
That's a volunteer job, fire department.
Yeah, I'd agree, I agree with that.
They're not getting paid for being volunteers and.
I don't know.
How about plowing your own driveways with company four wheeler and stuff? Graveling your own driveway with company material.
That's, uh, Gordon Lane there at the end of Culbessack Avenue is where we gravel. But in other words, you're just, like I said, anywhere it's soft.
How about front of your house?
There's a soft spot right, right there.
Right in the driveway?
Yep.
So, so we can do your driveway?
Well, we did, in front of those, we put gravel behind your.
Oh, you didn't? You didn't?
Behind your store, we had gravel.
And it's, it's, it's of my opinion, we shouldn't be using, um, city vehicles or city materials to do personal property. Doesn't matter if there's a soft spot or not.
It's along the edge of the road.
If it's in your driveway, you shouldn't be doing it.
Yeah.
Road's a road, driveway's a driveway.
Yeah, driveway's a driveway. If you're, if we're on the road, that's great, but if you're doing your own driveway, you can't be doing your own driveway. Cause we're gonna have citizens saying, oh, well, why don't we just do my driveway then too? I got a soft spot in my driveway, why don't you just go ahead and come down and do my driveway? I'm not saying my person, I'm just saying, a citizen to say, hey, you know what, you're doing yours, why don't you do ours?
Have you got a list about, have you got a list that you just said?
I'd have to write it out.
Okay, would you do that for us? And then I think we need to meet with them.
It's just, yeah.
I don't think.
Well, people worried about, uh, non-avoiding riding around on a four wheeler in the snowplow, what if something happens, does that be a large? the snowplow, what if something happens, does that be a large issue to the city, a big liability?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we were gonna just, that's a good point.
Be anybody by employees riding on, in any equipment.
Well, yeah, I have seen a kid on the back of the four wheeler, city's four wheeler, the parent with the child in the back.
Well, we're, uh, we'll discuss that in our personnel meeting and bring all that up. We are working on ways to try that.
Well, it's just what.
I'll fight it, I'll fight it, okay. So you guys know, those concerns had already been brought to our attention, and they were going to be discussed tonight in an executive session. So you're not saying something that we weren't aware of? We were, we, we knew about it, we were gonna do, discuss it tonight?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, you know. I, uh, I've been a property owner of a building next door to my, my main properties for the last twenty-five years, and I've probably paid, well, I've been paying water and sewer on it for those twenty-five years, except for the minimum amount, which probably amounts to about ten thousand dollars for what I call is basically a dead horse for me, I'd like to see what I could do to disconnect that or do something.
You haven't been paying sewer on it here?
No, just up until lately, and I appreciate that. Yep, just until last, what, in November, December, early, I don't know. And I, well, you do appreciate that, we've noticed that a lot, but I'm still paying, having one, needing to pay the water, which is twenty-five hundred.
The problem is with that, Terry, when the bond was passed, it was passed for X number of homes or.
Connections.
Connections.
Okay.
And that's what it's based on.
Okay, so what do I need to do to disconnect that? Do I need to have it dug up, do we use, dig it up, do you disconnect the sewer, do you lock it out, I mean, the water, do you lock it out so I don't get any water? I mean.
We haven't used anything.
We haven't used anything for twenty years.
Yeah.
And I'm just paying for nothing, you know, I'm not getting anything from it.
That's all I know about, it's hooked up, and according to the ordinance, it was originally included that many hookups.
Well, I'm tired of paying them out, that's what I'm saying, so I'd like to do something different.
Well, let us, uh, look into it.
Okay. In the meantime, I've stopped paying, Noreen knows, she can send me bills until you guys decide, so as soon as you decide, we decide on this, the better off.
I do know there was one other specific dead property that happened to be around my place.
Yeah.
And we ended up having to have it dug up, and it cost us a hundred fifty bucks, it was dug up, done, no more.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying nothing, I'm just saying, there was another property up there somewhere that happened to be doing the same thing for about twenty years, and we, it got dug up and capped it off.
And that's, you know, I'm, I think I've paid my share of my ten thousand dollars for this.
And all that water you used in that building.
I haven't used any hardly.
Well, the rain washing the roof off, you know.
Oh, you know, whatever it takes, you know, it doesn't make any sense.
I know you have it, Terry, I'm the one that pushed to do the sewer.
You know, it doesn't make any sense to dig up the sewer, line hookup there and stuff, if you wanna pull it or put a lock on it or whatever, and then just forget it, you know, but if you wanna pull the sewer or you only have to dig it up, you know, who knows, you might wanna put something back there, a residence, it would only help the city if you do.
Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up the exact same re, what you reinforced there, and this is the reason we went through that sewer thing, and we got a couple other places, it's, these things are building up bills, and they will never sell if they got a ten thousand dollar lien on a five thousand dollar piece of property because of the sewer, and if you tear the sewer out, then you've got another twenty-five hundred dollars to put it in, I don't wanna see that infrastructure destroyed when it could be just locked up. And in the, in the cities, on sewers, they, they have a system, they got a ball, you throw all the toilets and you put an air ball in there and the inspector certifies it's plugged, and you don't have to tear the whole sewer out, another twenty-five hundred, you don't have to tear the water line out, in case you ever sold the building, uh, and that's why we did the sewer thing, and, and you, I don't know if you were here, Mayor, or not then.
Me and the sewer.
Yeah, and I hate to see us destroy infrastructure, I think we have to work out a way to stop doing that, and there's very few places in town, and like the one up by, uh, whose place was it up there on the hill, you said they had one that they had to pull it out, was that you?
We had ours, not ours, we, we had to have it, somebody had to have it dug up.
Right, they had to have it dug it up, well, if you, you can dig it up, but it's twenty-five hundred to put it back in, and, and I hate to see that happen if it, all it takes is a lock or something, and very few places would be that disconnected as yours, because it hadn't had any of that. So, that, that was the argument we had when we tried to work that out, unfortunately, we did, did have some agreements with previous bonds and stuff, but we've also added people here, we got the year outs, wanna add a couple more, Parks and Light wants to add a couple, so I think we're ahead of the game, and our numbers are a little down, but, um...
Well, I think we need to be looking at making money somehow instead of, you know, making, having a deficit or having, having people come in and wanna open, do something, pay a resident or something, and if they pay the five thousand dollars, they're not gonna do that more likely.
Yeah.
You know what, and so, if you got it already there, then they're more likely might put something there, a residence there already, you know what I mean?
But having to dig it up and have it dug up, it's.
It's a lot of money, yeah.
Yeah, and not everybody come up with five thousand dollars right off the rip, putting sewer and water.
Yeah.
So we just like you guys to take consideration, if you would, you know.
We, we, that's been on our top list.
Dude, uh, the water, we just removed the water meter.
And all this is workable?
The sewer we just capped.
Then let's do it, Terry's been complaining about this for as long as I've been on the city council.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, it should have taken this long.
And, um, with, what, they have a pruing on their past due, but that'd be something that we can bring to the city council to, um...
Next month, but come to Jennifer next month.
And so, do we get like a refund?
No. No. Sandy, come on, this isn't Bell, California.
It wouldn't matter to me whether you just locked it out or whatever, I mean, whatever you wanna do, if you wanna put something in the toilet, which isn't very good in there, that's fine with me too, I don't care, you know.
Well, if they don't have water, they're not gonna be using it.
That's right. I move that we, well, how do you need to say this, that we proceed with Mr. and Mrs. Lay's request to, uh, cap the water in the sewer in the adjacent building that is a storage room.
Basically, it's storage room.
It's his antique business, yeah.
I was thinking that.
From fourteen May.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I had it. Aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
But I guess it's all settled, I'm tired.
And if you guys decide at some point in time I wanna hook it back up, if you wanna charge me a fee to do it, you know, you guys might wanna set up something like that, so you know, when you come back in and do it, you know, that would be fine.
I think there's a set fee that you have to pay for a rehook up.
Yeah, twenty-five, fifty, whatever, you know, whatever you guys set, you know.
Well, yeah, 'cause you don't want, somewhere down the line, you may decide to sell that land out all out, and.
And that only helps the city too.
Put a house there that one of the boys can live in, or a parent or something.
Maybe that'd be the new home of the new saddle club.
But I think, you know.
That's a joke.
Not good.
No, that's, uh, great, Tara, I appreciate your, you know, you've, you've, your patience and you've done, you've, all these years, and, and you've been on the council and you know the, the way this, how fast things move.
Been involved, see, right there, and so I know.
So. And other, the, one thing we don't wanna encourage is that everybody's gonna all of a sudden just start shutting everything down when it's vacant for a week.
Well, here's the deal, you guys need to set up something, you know, and if it needed to think on it a while, that would've been fine for you too.
Now, we thought about you a long time.
That's long enough.
You know what I mean, because basically it's been, I haven't used it for that long, you know, I think I've paid my dues, you know, I feel, so.
I don't think that takes a praise that what you paid in water bills.
No, it isn't, um, yeah, I'll never get that out, but actually, it's getting a disrepair, it's almost to the point where I might have to do something, decided to do something with it, tear it down.
How old is it?
It was built nineteen thirty-eight, after original deed, yeah. It was, uh, it was listed in Merkentown, been built in thirty-eight.
Hmm, thank you, yeah.
Well, a few remaining historical places, probably besides your hotel, or whatever.
Yeah.
Other than the city club, which is now a granny.
Is there any more questions or comments from citizens?
We got everybody? Chuck, you didn't have anything to?
He came with us.
He came for you?
Yeah, he's the one that, we're talking, thinking about doing his trailer, no, or
The reason for that is Fred Jabor is no longer the ownership, he may be the ownership of the property, but his daughters took him over, they're talking about condemning the building that we have a yard sales out of during the summer, and we wanna make sure we move that trailer house someplace.
Okay, so I didn't know that you're related to them?
Caroline is my mother.
Okay, I, 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 yeah, okay, I'm just looking at people and I, you know, trying to put people, okay, that's fine. So they're gonna.
Now, your trailer's got copper wire in it, right?
Yes.
And it's had approved, so it can be legally, that's the one you got from, uh, Glenn?
Yes.
Oh, that's a good trailer, so you, will you move it and not have a grandfather problem?
Yes.
I don't know where the water thing will work out or not, I'll have to check that.
Well, Awana, they took all the pressure out of you tonight.
Awana has a comment tonight?
No, I said they took all the pressure, we were always bugging her for a comment 'cause we don't, she's only one year.
I dedicated.
Thank God for her, because she knew all the answers, and the ownership on the library came up, she knew exactly where to go and who to talk to. Yeah, I know it, but.
Couple of years.
Any more comments? Yes?
Um, being a volunteer firefighter, uh, I was just kinda curious, I have not had proper training yet, still hoping, um, but I, at the saddle club, was told to actually put on, uh, air tank and mask to enter the building, what?
The thought there was, if David, if David had to go in, we had a second man to go in with David.
That's not right, is it? We shouldn't be doing that, should we?
That's actually, it wasn't us, it was.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Someone has to go in, someone has to go.
That's what I was asking, earlier we were asking, what, what they should do or shouldn't do, if they didn't have proper training, what do you do?
So...
I mean, 'cause that's, that's, that's a yes, you can't sometimes, sometimes you can't.
Today, if someone goes into the building, someone's gotta be there to back him up, go in and call him out.
Will you back up for David?
That was my idea of having him suit up.
Was he on there then?
Yes, yes he was.
Clubs, yeah.
I think he would've said something about it.
Well, I don't.
Especially if he has no training today.
Once they get a hose, they, 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 once they get.
It's dangerous and actually illegal.
What's illegal?
Another one.
Having him suit up for something he's not trained in, I have another friend who's a firefighter, he lives down in California, I talked to him about it, he says it's actually illegal, he's a firefighter, he's a jurist.
Back in the days when I was firefighter, we didn't have formal training, we didn't have any proper equipment, and the fire got just as hot as they do today, and twenty years, we only had one fatality.
A lot different today, Mike.
I, I.
A lot more liability.
I seem to remember, we had one session with the, uh, the mask and everything that you were there, right?
Yeah, I was trained.
So, uh...
On the air tanks, but I was not actually.
You never, so you were there just kinda have help, feeding the hose, Dave was front man down there, was that?
Well, no, we didn't even have Dave, nobody else got masked up, so he never even.
Yeah.
So, your point is, what did you want us to do?
I was just curious what kind of, uh, issues that would have caused if I had have entered the building.
Well, as long as you didn't get hurt, it probably would have been no consequence, but.
But what if he did get hurt, because he doesn't have that proper training?
Well, then, then, Mike, it's a volunteer fire department, you volunteered for the fire department, if you feel that you're in jeopardy, turn in your turnouts, turn in your stuff.
And if you're patient, you'll get your training.
I mean, they, they can't train unless they have a certain number, and if they don't have it, they can't train.
And I've been told that by Noreen, and I suppose Jerry, Bill has told me, and a few others.
But if there's other people who aren't trained, why do they, you know, grab money?
Good, that's, you were there, you volunteered, from what I recall, I'll go in, I got a mask, I'll put on a mask, I seem to remember you saying that.
You know, I was told by Herman actually, but yeah, I've been.
Uh, we didn't have, who else did we have there, let's see, Dave, me, you?
I've been actually wanting.
Jess was there, but Jess isn't trained, Brian was there.
I'm not gonna pull Brian on there.
You don't wanna put Brian in a mask with that.
I'm sorry.
I've been actually wanting to get the certification, the training for entry team.
I thought you had some experience up in Weah.
I do have some experience, but not for entry team, I was not trying to know.
Well, I don't, don't know how well we, but.
Well, even we at Fire Department's a lot better now than it was when I was in it. You don't need buckets and stuff, would you? No, we have to.
I'm sorry.
If we could find water to put in.
Well, to put it bluntly, you know, these training things are, just get more and more complicated, and, and it's like the, uh, QRU, the, uh, guys get paid three thousand, four thousand a month, wanna make sure we don't have a QRU, so they can make more money, and, you know, then pretty soon we can have the county come out here, it just gets, either we're volunteers, and we got a local one here, it's the only thing we're gonna have, and you're just not gonna get, you're, when you got no pay and you're, everybody's out busy doing other things, it's really hard to get all this training in order, and we do the best we can, that's all we can do.
Well, there's eight people that I called on the fire department. Nine, excuse me, nine people, and I don't call the Smith's boys because they haven't been trained, I didn't have Justin's name, but out of those people, Gary was there, Herman was there, Jason was there, Bill worked two shifts, he worked till four thirty in the morning and he was back in at eight thirty the next morning, working two times, he did that Sunday night and Tuesday, Chip was there, Chip has asthma, Chip went, left early, I don't know what happened there, Brian was there, and I don't know how long he was there, Dave Cabritz.
He was here all day.
He was there all night, he was there till four thirty in the morning, Sunday night, he went home at eight thirty, I called him back, he took a day off work, and worked all day Monday, and then he was there again Tuesday night. Um, I didn't reach you, I didn't reach you Monday morning, I didn't reach you, or I reached you Tuesday, but you'd already turned your turnouts in to be cleaned, and Jess Blankenship, and he was there, I don't know how long he was there Sunday night, he was back Monday morning for, uh, for a second, and then he went on to work, and he was there again Tuesday night, that's the list, that's the fire department, that's who I called, that's all there is, Herman worked two days straight, he worked fire all night, yeah, it's a volunteer thing, but then he was here working city, and he did that Sunday and Tuesday. If there's no more people volunteering, there's not a whole lot we can do.
And I've been talking to any friends that I can, trying to get them to join in, a few of them have said, yeah, if there's.
But then they don't come through.
That too, that's another issue.
Well, I think things will pick up, everyone patient and works towards the end for the community, eventually we'll get the, you're, you're younger people, I know you, you make it.
Yeah.
But a lot of us are pretty well over the hill for that, aren't we, Bill?
Oh, you're looking at me, I don't, I don't wanna be here.
Well, yes, we is.
You're still here, alright.
Yeah.
Well, I think the fire department does an excellent job here, from what I can see of it.
Fires are out, nobody got hurt.
That is, that is.
Yeah, we didn't lose the building, thank God it didn't go out all the way through that one door, we lost the bar and the library.
Okay, let's move on to the, uh, change the process of collecting past due accounts.
I had a suggestion for that, and I know we had a patron that said we should charge twenty-five dollars, just to even put a notice on there, but. If we, if, if, if Noreen had the, uh, the past due notices that go on the fences or whatever, already ready to go. In the morning, first thing, we already got Herman or Jason driving around town every day anyway, so it really doesn't cost us any more time. To put those on the fence, so that's just my opinion, but if you have them ready to go, it really doesn't cost any more to, to, to do those.
It takes, it's, it's a regular routine every month, I imagine, it, by the time you drive to separate houses. It, it, it's irrelevant amount of time, it's a couple hours, point is, it needs done, and the question is, one percent fee, is that what?
One and a half percent is the fee.
Of a ninety dollars, is a whopping ninety cents?
Well, the water bill is ninety-two dollars and forty cents. If it's not paid, and then, uh, by the twenty-fourth, it rolls over, it goes on my penalty report, report, the one and a half percent is assessed, and it becomes ninety-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So, do you, uh, is that pretty automatic, or do you have to go through a whole bunch of figuring if it's, uh?
I don't know, the, um, computer program.
So it's, it's just automatic?
The penalty report, and it calculates the interest on the past dues. I did a small report to let you know what we're looking at, um, we have a hundred and eighty utility bills each month. And we have an average of sixty-four accounts that are past due each month out of that. And this month, we were looking pretty good, I think, um, people are getting their tax returns and paying their utilities, we only have fifty-six past due accounts. The twen- people have up until the twenty-fourth of the month to pay before the assessment goes on. And once the penalty report is run, I prepare reminder letters to each account holder that did not pay. And this month, I prepared thirty-three letters. And they're included in the envelope with their bills, mailed out to them. And the reminder letters with the deadline to get your payment by this date, or your water will be shut off, usually brings in, um, half of the payments. And then the other half, um, if they don't pay by that date on the reminder letter, then they receive shut off notices, and this month, there were sixteen shut off notices. And, um.
Well, the ninety cents wouldn't even pay for your time and.
That's a lot of.
How many shut offs actually get shut off every month? I'm just curious.
Basically, our goal in this city is not to shut off the water to our customers, our goal is just to collect the pay from services that we give to the community. And so shutting off someone's water is a rare event. But we, but we have, you know, maybe.
Whenever, two or three months, you'll have to shut somebody off.
Um, basically, um, if they do not pay, they get the shut off notices, and they call me up, and they say, I can't pay by tomorrow, but my, I, my payday is Thursday, I'll bring it in then. We work with them, and I say, okay, but if they don't keep those commitments, and they keep saying, oh, it's gonna be next week, it's next week, that's when you shut off the waters, because they're not keeping their commitments, they're not paying when they shut.
So even if we don't shut it off on the date that they say they will shut it off, does that twenty-five dollar fee automatically go on there, even if you didn't shut it off?
Um, no, the twenty-five dollar fee that you, that is on the shut off notice, is if we shut the water off, they have to come pay their, their account.
Right.
Plus the twenty-five dollars to have it returned off.
Since we're kind enough not to shut it off, maybe we should be implementing the twenty-five dollars, if, say, I'll just use a date, so just for instance, say your water's we shut off on the twenty-fifth. And you didn't pay that bill, uh, by the twenty-fifth, maybe we ought to implement that twenty-five dollars, even if we don't shut it off, but still charging for that twenty-five dollars.
Uh, she did an excellent job, Noreen, on this, she went to Kerry, charges five dollars, about six dollars, and, uh, Saint Anthony.
That was going around at the time, we were discussing it, so.
I'm just curious, because we're kind enough not to shut it off for him, however.
Maybe five bucks or something, if, if you gotta go do, uh, just a ninety cents.
What does our shut off thing say, you have so many days?
Right.
The reminder letters.
I could probably read it to you, cause I do it every month, cause I don't pay a bill every month.
And then the shut off notices give them twenty-four hours, they put on the door, cross the around noon, and they need to have the payment in the next day by noon. And that's when payments start coming in, or I give them a call, asking, you know, can you give me a little more time?
Now, we got a one percent for late fee, automatic?
One and a half percent.
Yeah, uh, no, but if you gotta go put up a shut off notice, and then at that point, there should be some fee for the trouble to go put the notice up. At least five bucks instead of nothing, right?
I would disagree with that, because they're already driving around, and they're already there. Then the cost is coming out, unless we actually turn it off.
Well, you gotta make a special trip up to my house to shut me off.
If you shut it off, yes, if you shut it off, yeah.
We gotta give me a notice.
The cost of each one of the cards is twenty-five cents.
Okay, so we charge him twenty, charge him, charge him a dollar then, because he had to put it on there.
Well, you saw some samples on what other cities are doing, I want you also to consider that if you make a change, um, we'll need to update the, um, DOS program, the new DIS, to reflect the change. So that when we do the penalty report, it'll assess it, have, figure some way to get that assessed into the program. And for the new DIS, that would be, um, a hundred dollars to update the program, to assess those type of fees, and, um.
Get another ninety cents, we get a hundred shut off notices, we make our.
So I wanted you to be aware of that, and, um.
Well, I think, I don't, okay, I, I don't think we're ready for action, we just saw these lists.
Right.
Uh, we just brought this up last, maybe, last table list, and maybe next.
We can resume it next time, I'm thinking.
And I think we should consider whether we wanna charge a, um, if it's to a shut off notice time, there's an extra fee beyond the penalty.
Well, I think, I don't understand why we're being nice, I mean, I don't understand. If you say we're gonna shut it off, and these people know they're not gonna shut it, we're not gonna shut it off, then why are we even sending?
At least charging them twenty-five bucks, because even if you don't.
Why are we sending, uh, a shut off notice?
Because those sixteen people that got the shut off notices, that's how they respond to paying their bills. They don't respond to the reminder letter, they don't respond to the bill, but they respond to the pink shut off notice on their door, and they go.
They're doing that every time.
Water bill.
Every month?
There's people who deliver every month.
That every month, that's how.
I, I'm one of them, I, I forget to pay the bill every month, I never do.
Well.
If they had, if, 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 if we had auto pay.
If we came to shut your water off, what would you do?
No, I always end up paying it, cause I, the only, I do remember, but if we had auto pay, wouldn't have a problem, I did, my, my credit card be down here, be auto pay, that's like I pay everything else.
Right, I do have, um, customers that wanna pay by their debit card or.
Absolutely.
But we do not have that service, it's cashier checks.
That's, uh, this is the only place I pay cashier check to, everything else is done by auto pay.
There's some people that pay with online banking.
You got a bank account, don't you? Through, if you got it through, say, all that's credit, and you can do automatic checks, payments that'll come right out of your account, that'll come right stuff to here.
If I did it through my cell, the, Noreen can do it.
I collect.
You can do it yourself.
Noreen can do it, though.
Yeah, she can do it.
No, but if, if you.
You put it up.
If you put it through the bank, automatically, automatically, every month, it's that, damn.
You need to go set it up.
The Ella check to me.
Yep.
About to city hall.
Right, but that's more of a, that's more of a big ass hassle than, I've gotta just do it by auto pay with cars, like here, but, because we're just gonna update it, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Cost me an extra dollar. I, I, now, I don't understand the difference, so you get a notice like I do, it says it's gotta be paid by the so-and-so date. And once I forgot, then I come down, and then I get to pay you an extra dollar. But you, when you, if I don't pay it, he has to hand deliver a notice on my door and says in twenty-four hours or whatever, I never got that far.
But we don't do that.
You don't do it?
I don't, but we don't do it.
Unless I do not get a phone call, and I do not get a payment. So within those twenty-four hours, if there hasn't been a phone call, you know, asking for special mercy or a payment.
And then I'll go on my other door, and if there's anybody home, I'll then come down.
We'll shut in the water off.
Yeah, I'm here to shut off your water, if you cannot go down and pay.
And then they dash down and I get money.
And there's no extra fee beyond the normal late fee, if he has to deliver that notice? That's something we could consider.
That we need, yeah.
See, that, that late fee is just a.
Yeah, that might stop that late.
Yeah, cause there's people.
Late people, those sixteen people might curb that, then if you start charging them extra. You shut off, you pay twenty-five bucks.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm.
Even five bucks would be better than nothing.
If you.
Pay for his.
You shut off, yeah, costs twenty-five bucks, you're not gonna do it right now. I, I probably remember what's going on.
We had other things to do, other time.
Okay, we're gonna table that and talk about it.
Yeah, we'll table that till next week, let's get on to.
Streetlights.
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 Switched, LED lights.
That basically was covered under Herman's report, so I'm gonna put that under unfinished business for next month also.
Alright, purchase posting of no parking signs, we'd covered that too, didn't we?
I just wanted, um, a recommendation from the council, we had talked about getting, um, signs, um, one would be at the end of Ponderosa Loop, and the other, Bull, Klein Drive. There was, um, Herman brought me a catalog from a company that had a, a nice sign, you can pass that around, that's what it looks like. But when we were checking that out for purchasing, that's from a New York company, and we had found in the past, when we purchased from here, please, if there's anything wrong with your order. Good luck ever getting it straightened out, cause you know, we're way over here on the west coast. Um, we do deal with a local company over in Washington, and that's where we've been getting the replacement street signs around town. And I called them, and they don't have that exact sign, but they said they could do a custom sign for any sign that we want, I could fax them that and tell them what we want. Um, it would be through a local company, about half the cost for a custom sign.
Half the cost, specially made, wow.
Yeah, the New York company, it's sixty-four seventy-eight each.
Half a ship each.
And here, local, it's thirty-five dollars.
Oh, wow.
So, you know, um, I haven't had a custom sign made before, but they, um.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
They are a big company, we've been dealing with them, and they would be able to get the post.
See you later.
That we've gotten before from them.
Should, you're talking about two, should we order an extra one? Is there someplace that?
Is there anyplace else in town?
That you can think of, that you might need one in town?
If we went to, um, for custom signs, we'd even get lower than the thirty-five a sign.
Well.
So, if we can think of other places, then it might be good.
The same sign, once they have to cut the stencil.
Yeah, the same sign, right, correct, yeah.
You for it?
No, we don't need four of them, but if there's someplace else that needs them, as I'm asking her to look around and think. Let's order them at one time, instead of two different orders, and get a lower price. And so if we have three signs that need to go up, and we have one extra one sitting in his office.
Then it does for sure have to be the same sign, we couldn't like mix and match?
No, because they, they set the, um.
Oh, okay.
But thirty-five dollars for one sign is a lot less than what we were finding in New York, and it's with our local company, but I'm gonna stay with you.
It was better.
Now, may, may I say something? Back when I was on the council, and later, we actually had somebody that was, uh, worked for the county. And that's still an option for you guys, if you might wanna check them and see, maybe they got some signs, spare signs. You know, you might, cause they make, a lot of times, they make their own signs, I think they used to make their own signs, don't they? And so, rather than buy them, they have the city, you know, that's an option, rather than, and if you can't, then work them.
There were some other signs that we were trying, trying to get to them.
Um, detour.
And the, uh, one, one by the bridge, it says slow congested area, because you got the speed limit, they come right around that corner, and there's, most people don't realize, they take the turn, they're in the middle of the city. Like to have one that says congested areas.
They wouldn't touch that, no, they wouldn't touch that.
You can do that, you're not saying children that play, you're just telling them it's congested area, you put it right below the.
You know, you can check within the scene, I think they make their own signs, so.
Thank you, see you Tuesday. Tuesday.
I'll be calling, you'll remind you when the fire meeting is.
That was driving me nuts, I wish you'd see stuff on the.
You can, you can surplus.
Sorry.
Can we take that five minute break before we, is that?
Well, yes, yes, yeah. Gun club permit, we gotta do, we gotta do gun club permit before we, uh, break the meeting, right?
Well, yeah, don't, no, it's a, right, gun club.
We have one more thing to do.
Yes, adding to the, um, agenda after those street signs, was the gun club permit, I still move, I second.
All in favor?
Alright, that was great, here's your break.
I guess I'll go too.
Oh, take a five minute break, and then move, same thing, exactly the same.
Well, they never know, you may need water in there to take. I've had it for twenty years.
No, I haven't said anything to anybody, and then all of a sudden, hey, Mike?
I got two phone calls.
Are you working tomorrow? I gotta call her, I ordered Friday night, and I went through and put in my pickup for Thursday, did everything like I always do, made my order, when you'd have to confirm, you know, log out.
Yeah.
The second confirm, would that.
Their computers was down.
They said the whole, I didn't see the government, I had my, um, mark. So I typed a little comment, and then it just.
They just gotta go and bait electricity, went out to all their printers and everything, they couldn't do nothing since last Friday.
Hey, Sandy, my desk, yes ma'am. Well, I evidently, we might have our, I didn't know what was going on. Take it in your car.
Kids room, Jason goes, comes up work at seven o'clock.
Sounds good, thank you. It was in my, yeah, I'll take it in my. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't know we were aware, but you know.
Grabbing their own driveway.
That's not something you sit and go through with a man.
Right.
That's just, yeah, yeah, if you guys have concerns, they can come to us, and then we go to him. But not sit here, not sit here in an open meeting.
No, we can't do it, that's why I said, you know, what you guys are saying, we're aware of, and we have an executive.
I didn't know we were aware, yeah, and there's more.
So, are, are we asking him to stay, are we just, I think we were talking about first, because there's another one that I know about, that involves, I was on the, complaining about the toilet at the library, it's raining.
Yeah, I have nothing to do with me, I think.
Well, I figured it, when I saw Mike walk in, and then I saw the lady walk in, I knew it wasn't gonna be a good day for us.
I remember the, the, that law store, cause we paid for that for over twenty years up there, and.
Well, I thought, we've had this discussion about Terry and that building before, and it just needs to be capped.
But see, we didn't have, see, his was a different situation.
I thought there was a fee for it, that's why they weren't doing it. But like you said, all these years.
And so how much, well, how much is?
Well, his, his is a different deal than ours though.
I thought it was like five hundred dollars to get it capped off.
It was two hundred and fifty bucks is what we ended up paying. But see, the thing was, we didn't have a building there though. We didn't have a building there, nothing. That's why we finally said, well, Martin Seale, me, Martin Seale across the street from my house. Anyway, we didn't have a building there. He has a building there, so it's kind of a little bit of a different story. Cause he does have access to a building. Ours was a lot. It was never gonna be used again.
So now my thing is, I wanna know what the, how much they owe.
Yes, we'll find that out next month.
Oh, that's Noreen.
Yeah, well, we should, it's supposed to be brought up next month, so we should know.
Oh, that's Noreen tonight.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure about wiping off some big ass.
Yeah. Yeah, how long has he not been paying it?
That's what, that's what I'm getting at. When you could've come, any other council meeting at any other time, it doesn't take you every time.
The only other time I've seen Terry, and it was Terry and his two brothers, was, uh, a budget hearing a couple of years ago. Three years ago, four years ago.
Yeah, so.
It's the only time.
I mean, I agree with, somebody hasn't, I agree with somebody hasn't used something in twenty years, you know, but he has a building there. Shouldn't want to use it.
I, I didn't think there was ever a problem that he couldn't get off of that. I, you know, if he wanted to pay for it to get out of it.
Right. That, we had, we didn't get it wiped off, we had to pay for it.
He was on the council all that time, why didn't he do it then?
Yeah, we had to pay for it. It wasn't like the city gave us a break or nothing, we had to pay for that.
That's what my understanding.
We paid for the hourly wage and the city had to be there to cap off the sewer part. But everything else, we had to pay for, to the backhoe and all that, you know, to dig it up and all that shit. We had to pay for that.
At the back doors, light ones.
They're good, but you know, Kathy cheated. She didn't make them.
Yes, she did.
No, she didn't.
She, she went to the store and made them by buying them. Are you ready to sign?
She cheated this time. She really, really, really cheated.
Maybe just approaching a hundred dollars.
But, yeah, the hundred we passed due and, um.
Are we signed now?
Twenty-five for the current one. And, um, all the public just left.
I got a feeling Ben Gilner ain't paying his bills, right?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, really, what are we gonna get out of it? We're gonna clean it and we're gonna pay for it, right? How can you get any money out of a man who's a gentleman, ladies in a nursing home? But how are you gonna get money out of it?
And the house is mortgage for sale.
Realistically, I mean, who, we're gonna be doing it.
Well, at least we can get, get a pushback to.
Well, that's.
And make enough out of scrap to pay for.
Well, that's what Clint does that. My son, he, he goes around and picks up, you know, I don't know, I haven't talked to him, but you know, he might do the job for what he gets out of it.
And he, there is a lot, I mean, scrap right now is a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, he's.
I mean.
I've trucked him right.
He's been good.
Thousand dollars in scrap.
Yeah.
Well, it's a hundred and sixty a ton.
First gosh, it's four hundred dollars.
Yeah, well, it's expensive how you haul it away though.
Do we need to get the, uh, spring cleanup dumpsters here?
Oh, hell, we didn't bring that up, did we?
No, I didn't think about it at the time, but that was, you know.
That'll be, uh, shabandy, so we can do it next month.
All right. Oh, I, we need to close the meeting, Bob, and go to executive session six, seven, two, three, four. So I will move that we go to executive session, uh, under Idaho code six, seven, two, three, four, five.
So I don't swing it.
All in favor?
No, you have to, you have to have a second.
I second it.
And then I need to.
And then you can say all in favor, but then it has to be individually polled.
Bill?
Yes, I'm in favor.
No, you, she goes, she goes down the line.
I do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Catherine Lomar?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Robert Sharp? Do you wanna go into executive session?
Has to do with me. Please hear?
Sharon Schessel?
Yes.
Phil Schubert?
Yes.
Okay, now, we can, now we're done legally.
So we're officially in, is that your session?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, move, we give ourselves double our wages.
Have you got, have you got the recorder off?
Yes.
Now we yell and scream.
Okay.
It's done this.